But it does need to be open discussion to be addressed, because I will not be placed in the middle in trying to make a determination based on interpretation of who can use what.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you know, I agree with Manager Payton, we need to probably come up with some guidelines. And there probably should be some limitations also as to how frequently, you know, trustee can use it. Not that this board would, this board never would abuse the privilege, but there might be some other folks elected that might abuse the privilege. So, you know, so maybe like once a quarter, but and they should define, even though there may be disagreements between individuals, but if that elected official wants to have a function for whatever reason, they should be able to, you know, have it. I know there was one, I know that you were asking me about mayor where somebody passed away and they didn't have a place to have a repass or something like that. And that's when I, you know, I knew that we have this policy. I said, you know, you're the mayor, you are entitled to, you know, let them use the spot. They couldn't afford it otherwise, and, you know, they were residents here in the village and so she generously made arrangements for them to, you know, to use the 90 Town Center here for it. So, you know, there are things like that. There might be periodically a homeowners association that would like to be here and have a function or senior citizens that, you know, are throwing a house to somebody, you know, they want to use it. So, I, 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 in my opinion, you know, an established approved committee by the village, such as the finance committee, they should be entitled to use it without, you know, any regard, assuming that it's scheduled properly. But I think the trustees should have that ability also. Anything beyond whatever the cap is, then they should pay just like anybody else would pay, you know? Because I remember having to do that also before the policy was changed and I was informed that, you know, I could get a hookup here and I wish I took advantage of just one type of hook.
Madam Mayor, my views on this here, I think we need to have some healthy discourse about the policies and procedures because they're, as Manager Payton stated, that we don't have any right now and he doesn't want to get in the middle of, of fractions deciding upon who's, who's right or who's wrong in this one thing here. So, I advocate a healthy discussion on how we can establish and lay down some ground or some ground rules for the rental of the particular spots here at University Park. As, as, as a new trustee, I do not want to limit any trustee because we're to use our, our own discretion and we have to abide by the other trustees and hopefully they will utilize the best discretion possible. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't have any policies in, in place. But I do not want to restrict any of my colleagues up here within reason if they have a particular need for a rental property. And I wholeheartedly believe in my colleagues up here that they will not try to abuse, but I don't want to limit any trustee in utilizing the facilities of this, of our village.
Okay, and I get that and we have to look at both sides. When we say it should be village sponsored, that's the only thing that I say. If we're going to do it, it should be village sponsored. Whatever elected officials are doing, it should be village sponsored. Because we have 6,900 other people besides the six people on the one committee to come up here and get it for free, I'm getting phone calls on a regular. Well, I tried to get, I had to pay $20, $20 a chair, blah, 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 and I can't use it. That's not fair to the other taxpayers. I understand everybody's a taxpayer and they have their opinions. So, there's so many people to say, well, why can't I do it? Why can't trustee go and sign for me and let me have what I want to have there? And then we need to think about that. That's an issue that we need to really consider. So, it's not fair to have one people, seven people, to have everyone up here and like this and employee that we have to pay to open the doors and shut the doors, the lights, the heating. We had to pay $10,000 for the roofing. It was used as therapy for 10 to 4:30. That's $250 we could have gotten from somebody else that normally people aren't paying. The baby showers that are held here, they pay. And the same thing in Pine Lake. And it's a beautiful area and people would love to use them, but we need to put something in place. That's all I'm asking, that we put policies so everyone will be satisfied and be, and be fair. We just can't let it, it cannot be like that. It can't be one sided. And I agree with my colleagues here. We just need to put something together and if there's an emergency or somebody passed away, they're past resident of the village, they were a taxpayer all those years. Yeah, if the board totally agrees, I will not ask for that unless I consult some of the best trustees as well. Is this okay for you guys to do this? I will not just do it independently. I will ask. And as you said, some of the associations, if they can't go to the library, which 99% of them do go to the library for their meetings, if you'd like to use it, okay. Then let's just make a policy and state, state those things. But they should be documented, as the chief said, so they'll have some guidelines to go on and say, okay, that's okay to do, no, you have to pay, no, you have to pay. Because that's not fair for other residents be told, no, I can't, you can't have it in there. And they're, well, that's not fair. And they're paying $50 an hour plus they have to pay for these chairs. $2 a chair, on it for a table. Do you know, Gary, offhand?
Uh, ma'am, it's included on, on the sheet, on the field. There's a certain limit.
Right, right. So, the limit is like, and tables. Yes, and they've been charged that. So, that's why I would say, anything, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I can go back to 1972. All the trustees here in University Park gave whatever they wanted to give and it was never a cost, okay, for a trustee to do this. This had nothing to do with tearing down a village or tearing down anybody politically doing anything. It was nothing like that.
Wait, you said that, no.
Right, it, it was very respectful.
Yep.
Everything, but there was never a charge for the trustees to do these things. Now, why is it going to go to that equivalent now when it's really not costing that much money to come here in the first place? I ask you, uh, I want to, chief, I want to say, manager, but, you know, manager. Does it, I feel go up when we have functions here, or do they stay the same?
On average, we looked at the average amount of functions that go on in 90 Town Center on a month that we have high rentals and a month that we have average rentals. And the disparity of the bill is not affected that much at all whatsoever, at all. Because the village, the building still has to be open and maintained for piping and plumbing purposes and various other things. So, that, that's very important to state. Understand, when the subject was brought up, I am a very analytical individual. So, when people bring up issues, I look at all avenues. I look at the cost of the village compared to being used and not being used, the timing of the usage. I also look at, and it should be made noteworthy, that even when a trustee requests the use of the unit, when we have a rental, rentals take priority over trustees renting the 90 Town Center. So, we're not bumping anybody that's a paying person that's using the town center. It's only when the town center or the, or the other property is open. All I'm requesting, and I think I'm requesting this on behalf of Public Works and Village Hall staff is, we need to have clear definitions of what village sponsored event is. We have, need to turn and look at constitutional issues as far as restricting various groups who are using the unit based on constitutional issues that may exist in order to protect the village from litigation. Also, we need to be able to have a clear basis and something in writing that employees go off of. That's all I'm requesting. What the board's prerogative is and what the board's prerogative is and what they decide. All I'm asking is for a document. I don't care what's on the document. All I'm caring is, care for is a document for me and my staff to go off of so we don't have to make interpretation or judgment calls in regards to the usage of the unit.
Okay, okay, I don't see anything wrong with that, but like I said, since 1972, I can verify that that's how it's been. And why is it going to change now? It's nothing that's going array here to disatisfy anybody, you know? Things are done respectfully, especially when I sit up and put my name or something and say, okay, we're going to have a meeting here. I'm not going to allow disrespect or anything like that to go on in front of me. That's not going to happen. I'll, I'll turn the lights off and go. So, I think it should stay the same.
As he said, oh, man, trustee.
Madam Mayor, can I make a recommendation for this? Is that maybe we can take a look at the libraries and the school way of renting or their space and let's go from there.
Okay.
I mean, let's be fair.
That's a good suggestion, but she said examples.
Just an example, I'm, I'm, no, I'm example, just, and then we come back and talk about it because, you know, so we don't go in circles with this, that's all.
Okay, also, the fact that, as the chief said, we need a policy in place. What went on in 1974, they don't make cars like they did in 72. They don't make cars like they made, so things need to change as far as procedure. That's the problem with this village. We don't have policies, procedures. That's why we nilly willy, out of order, everything's crazy. They need to have something to refer to. Nothing against anything you say, but I understand what you're saying. We're trying to, no, but we're trying to put policies in place so we can follow something. We have nothing to follow on. You heard what IRA said, they, we don't have policies in place. Nobody can verify anything. We can't hold anybody to the fire when we don't have any documentation. Well, here's where you're supposed to get this. We just want to put policies, that's business. Policies and procedures, structure, which I've been saying since I've been in there. We don't have structure in this village. We don't have structure. Yeah, we don't have structure, just like we're doing the policies with travel. People were going, people were going back and forth, back and forth. He has nothing to hold up to say, well, I can't do this because here's the policy. I can't do this because here's the policy. That's all we're saying. Business cannot be ran without policies and procedures and regulations. That's how it's like. So, we will discuss that.
And Madam Mayor, it should be made noteworthy, you know, even beyond this, the village manager works based on guidance from the board, either through legislation or board direction. And for me to sit here and to interpret the board's will when there's nothing in writing is very difficult for me to do, especially in the current climate that we're in. So, that's very important to state. The, the subject being brought up is not to place anything in place to restrict anybody because my recommendation is not to restrict, I don't have a recommendation in regards to the restriction of the use of the property. My only recommendation is have something in writing for me and my staff to work off of to establish.
When people come up to the village hall to rent something, we can say, well, this is the thief for here, this is the thief for that. Based on, and a smart person would say, where's your policy? Because I brought that up at an airport when a guy said, you can't do something, something. The group of people say, well, where's the policy? You have no policy, you can't tell me anything. So, we have to deal with all other 6,900 and some people in the village. We've got to have order people. That's all we're trying to do. We can use it for this, okay, we can do this, restrict it, but you gotta pay. It's, we just put a $10,000 unit, am I correct, Mr. Gary, Mr. Gary Richardson? For this unit, it's $10,000. This cost us depreciation, we gotta pay for this stuff too. $250 or other people have used, asked to use it, another organization, as Mr. Gina Williams said, and they were paid $400. That fair to them? They're prank taxpayers too. But we need to make it consistent across board. I just say, if it's village sponsored, fine. And village sponsor is for, so there's no argument there, isn't this, trust?
I, I think, I think, can you repeat? I think you just answered my question, you say, if it's village sponsored.
Yes.
Has to be village sponsored.
Yes, other than that, they should pay.
Not civic, not resident, not taxpayer, but just village sponsored.
This is the facility, because Park Forest has a facility. I went over there and I looked at their rules last Friday. They paid $50 in their bottom unit, I think one of our trustees here rented it. Uh, trustee, $50.
For what?
To use the facility.
What facility?
That they have in Park Forest downstairs, they have one. And they rented it out.
That was for truck parts.
Right, but that, but you still, it's rental. You just can't go and say, well, let me talk to a trustee.
I, you know what? I got a policy, I think this whole thing is brought up because the block, community block club.
Ma'am, we are putting, no, it's no, Miss Trust, I won't blame yourself with that. My thing is, it is based on, and I'm going to say this, it's based on the fact we have no policies in place. People renting.
You are right, you are right.
We don't have any policies and that's what we're trying to do. And that's what we're trying to do.
And it needs to be stated, ma'am, you are so right.
Thank you, Miss Trust, same there.
And it needs to be stated that Russian blood comes in here and somebody else has a price on that thing, but honor the gospel truth. But it need, you need to have a policy, my ma'am.
Thank you, we do, and we're going to, we're working on it.
You are right, right there.
Thank you.
You need to have a policy. That's why the community block club have policies and procedures.
And everyone else has one. The other organizations have one, I'm sure Roswell's has, White House has policies and procedures. Everyone has it, okay, okay, we can move on. Thank you, we will go after that and so we're bringing that to you. We're going to talk about it, put it together, look at it and view the degree of whatever. It'll be out for your, your hands.
I, I was just going to hit the direction of the board. Do you want the manager, myself, and whoever's working on it to look at the library and school? You citizens, we'll look into that.
The government's state charged for everything.
Come back for further discussion.
Government's state charged for everything.
Actually, actually, council, what I want to do is, is look at these policies, let's have a draft ordinance together. And if it needs to get tabled or put down to a first reading, we can do that.
Yeah.
I think we need progress on this.
Exactly.
So, let's go get this draft something, first reading, and then go to the board.
Not first, second, and third.
No, it's remaining.
And we'll do comparison, see what they're doing. We want to be consistent. Okay. One reading, okay? Thank you. Discussion, here we go. Crime-free housing ordinance. And I want to thank trustee Oscar Brown has brought this. I think he wanted one on the table originally, but he, and I brought this to the board before, but he told me then I was trying to reach strict people with session eight and I wasn't, but, and if they'll, but I thank you that you reviewed this, did homework on it, and he actually put this on the, for the discussion for the agenda and it's here. And I will let him speak.
First, I thank you, Madam Mayor, for placing this on the agenda. I believe public safety is one of our most important issues that we are facing right here in the village of University Park. And it's something that I found interesting, was interesting. I was in Park Forest on an unrelated matter and noticed at their police station that it, at their police station, you can pick up a packet in regard to their crime-free housing ordinance and their way of implementing their crime-free housing ordinance. And I think a copy of our next door neighbors would be an excellent idea for us in University Park. Just a quick overview of it. The crime-free housing ordinance creates a private right of action for a landlord to take action against tenants who are accused of criminal activity. It also, in their version of the ordinance, takes care of the various issues that has been presented by the American Civil Livelihood Union or the ACLU in that regard, and it's constitutional. They just updated this, their version of the ordinance, I believe, about six months ago. In particular, and something I would like to see added to my typho field preamble is that should a tenant or any member of tenants' household, any guests or any other person, person associated with the tenant or his household come in and, and, and.
This is Park Forest.
Yeah, nothing in this leaves, so discouraged be any tenant from contacting police or emergency services. That has been the ACLU's biggest issue with crime-free housing ordinances or when you look at a crime-free housing ordinance. Basically, the, the problem that most, that ACLU has had is with, with phone calls. This is based on criminal activity by a resident and creates a private right of action for that landlord. It has worked very well in Park Forest. If you go and you do a Google search on Park Forest or you read their newsletter that they put out every month, they even originally brought this ordinance to take care of drug problems and various condominiums there that they have in Park Forest. So, I think it's a good thing. I did make some recommendations on how we should implement the ordinance. The attorney has that. I also believe there's a section that we should move to, the housing section. It has to do with security deposits and, and we have it right now in the criminal section. I did do a search on, in our classified ordinances. I did not see any crime-free housing ordinance in our ordinance. I also did not see a nuisance violation in, in our ordinance. Now, I have heard that this had, was done before, but I could be, I could be wrong. That's why I asked that we, that it be checked to be sure, we've caught everything. I also believe that the crime-free housing ordinance should be complied with first before you will, you can get a certificate of occupancy, which is required every year under our current ordinances now. So, that's pretty much a, a big general overview and it also can lead to revenue because there are fees attached with this ordinance. So, that's pretty much it and I would really appreciate if we could get those changes in and at least get it ready for a first reading at the next board meeting.
Well, I would tell you, trustee, this probably is something that needs to go to a first reading. The reason being is, this is a huge undertaking. First, you're going to have to get buy-in from all your renters, all your condominiums. Everybody's a renter, all our apartment buildings, you got to get them to comply. You have to give them a transitional period, which probably needs to be placed in the ordinance if this is passed. Then I have to find resources, manpower, the police departments do the classes, you know? So, and then we have to work with coupling the code enforcement piece to it with the occupancies inspection issue that's tied to it. So, this is going to be a multi-departmental interdisciplinary undertaking. So, I do agree that we probably do need to do something, especially based on the issues that we see in University Park. But I think we need to take this very slowly and I think we have to be very regimented. I say we take this to a first reading, we take this over to our police department, have our administration of the police department review and provide input back to myself and the board. At the next board meeting, Commander Wilson will be prepared to brief that topic, provide input based on how she sees it, based on the first reading, and really from there, advance it forward. If this is not something that needs to be shotgunned as a first, second, and third reading, because the issue you're going to run into is, you can do it, but I'm going to say as village manager you have an implementation issue. And even if the board passes it, I'm not going to sit here and push the implementation, especially if we don't have a piece of the puzzle in place to implement it properly.
And also, you have to look at Mike Francis, and it's good because we have a meeting, the mayor's meeting every first Saturday, and I have brought this issue to them in their discussion. So, they're going to, all the 17 of us, and they're going to share what we, theirs, what they have in place. And this again, is what I'm talking about with the village. We haven't had one that you spoke for years. Our policies and procedures, and that's a task that I'm going to put on the board, each trustee to look at some ordinances and you're doing a great job, trustee, and I appreciate that. And we're going to all look at different ordinances to update them. Some of our ordinances go back, dated back to the 70s. And that again, it's not acceptable anymore. We don't do what we used to do in the 70s, that's ruthless. So, we've got to update and be real in what we're doing. Here on this ordinance also about the removal and defacing, okay? That's, they're looking at $250 to $1,500. We get that on the record and our police officers and code, I mean, Public Works have, they cleaned defacing, I don't know how many times, from our, nothing but our, um, those bus shelters. I mean, you wonder why people don't want to do anything here. We have beautiful bus shelters and you deface them, crack the windows, and nothing is done. So, we're trying to get a system in place about that. That's another issue that I'll talk about later. And we'll be able to check at some of these people, $250 for that. Then you got to look at, they're talking about the license for corporation partnerships for condominiums, townhouses, co-ops, memberships, homeowners, associations and that, and what we have to do with that. They even have to look at this and buy into it as well. So, as he said, it's not going to be overnight, but we are going to work on updating because we, look at their ordinances, 18. It's not too many ordinances we have 2018 on our records. And this is terrible and it's not helping anybody. But the chief and I have also talked to some people that want to contract in as inspectors. And they've come in and want to help us as well, but we might have to go back to our fire department. They used to do an excellent job in assisting in inspections. So, in the case this happens, that's what we might have to do to implement this law. But it will be looked at and it's going to take a lot of work and it will take segments and bases for us to do, but we will do this and it needs to be done immediately.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I have one last thing, just more of a suggestion for the council. When you look at our section B, the Park Forest version of the ordinance, it talks about one unit, two unit, three unit buildings. I'd like to see, when we look at our fee structure, that it goes by unit ownership rather than by the house. So, say like a, an organization like Red Matt that has several location, several houses within the village, that they pay that kind of a rate. So, we should look at our rate structures as well when, when you're doing your, taking your first stab at it.
It's like a landlord or multiple houses.
Exactly.
And that's something that I heard too. Is there, I don't know, anyone knows here on the board, maybe trustee Milton Payton? Is there some housing law that I have ran across a long time, but I'm not sure if we have it? It was discussed after being with us, with the mayor's, that they have to pay a certain amount? If they have one house owned, if they have, if they own a house, that they can't rent and live in it or own it or rent it? Is there any such order of housing?
Well, some of the condo or homeowners associations have that rule that you, you know, you're allowed one rental unit or you have to, you know, live in the unit. But I would like to just put my saddle on a horse here and just ride a couple of comments. I really appreciate trustee Oscar Brown bringing this, you know, to the board's attention and I really fully appreciate the mayor and chief about what it's going to take in order to implement something like this as massive. Probably about six years ago, I brought to them, whoever those managers at that time, I think, the mayor and the police chief, a manual that I had gotten from one of my clients in Chicago Heights. No, not Chicago Heights, it's Cadillac City. And their landlords had to go through training and they had to sign an agreement with the, the village in order to rent property. And there had to be certain things in the lease. And even HUD has this now, I think, for, there have, certain provisions have to be in the leases. So, what, what I would recommend us to do is to survey all the other communities that have them because, you know, other communities do have this kind of crime-free thing so that you can get the bad, it really is just to get the bad apples out. And, and take the best parts from each one and then implement it ourselves. There might be some grant money that's available that we could tap into to, to help, to implement something like this and even help, you know, to, to put it together and make some, some additional resources. So, I would like to see us do that and I'm sure the landlords will appreciate it also because, you know, it makes it a hell of a lot easier to get the hell raisers out of their units. And I'm telling you, some of these renters, some of these tenants know how to game the system and it takes you, takes you a year or more to get them out. I had a situation in Chicago where it was a two-unit building. In order to get the tenants out, they offered each one of the tenants $3,000 to give them keys. Because of the, because if they didn't, they would just string this thing out and it would just cause more and more problems, a lot of legal fees. And so, it was cheaper for them to pay the $6,000 than it was, you know, to go through the process of the victim. So, this is a real benefit also to landlords. Now, ma'am, we, we have approved a multi-housing committee that has never really started up. But I would think that we should, as part of this process, either have public hearings or let, have that committee drawn together with, you know, the managers of some of the apartment complexes so that they can provide input to this whole process. Because there's one thing to have, you know, I, when I was in the industry, I had a literally safety manuals and operations manual that spanned this much. But my, my thing was that unless the employee was motivated to do something and to follow the procedures, it was, they were worthless. So, I think I would hate to see us having something on the books that was worthless. I mean, you know, it I mean, you know, just in terms of, of the effectiveness, and so, but when you get buy-in, particularly for me, the managers of these complexes, it'll be a whole lot easier for us to really have something that's gonna really benefit the village. And again, I thank, you know, trustee Brown for bringing that to some.
And I'm glad of him that he brought it up, because when I tried to bring it, it was voted down, and this is so important, and I'm glad God put on His heart a little bit back, because I have these people that you were talking about, the house with me, we had also a, um, real problem with squatters, and he helped us with that, trustee Payton, and now we have something in paper, just a second, we have some documentation now and policies on squatters' policies. Um, I've worked with the South Florida Mayor Managers, and they do have, um, Pisha, she will help, she said she'd be glad to come out here, trustee, to help us, and that's some source we can use when we're putting this policy together, 'cause that's what she could, with the land bank and all, and she could help us put this together with this plan, the commission, um, committee, because they are, we have a lot of people in the village that's very happy to be a part of that as well. So we'll put that together, that'll be on the next agenda. Yes, sir.
I just have a question. I think that all this is a great idea, however, is there a way that we could target date phases of implementation, so that we have something in place without, you know, having to have a whole policy in place before we implement anything? 'Cause that could take up to two or three years.
No, no. First, first, I would tell you, it, it's not gonna take two or three years. That's not gonna happen. The first thing is, I can give you a targeted date once we get the first draft of this done. Once we get a first draft of this done, and see the mechanisms and the processes that we have in the first reading of ordinance, then it gives me a better gauge, because every town has different hybrid type of policies in regards to crime-free housing.
Do you think you could get something phased in by summer? Summer's a big bump in crime.
Miss, Miss Phillips, what we're, we're discussing, the board is really good, and you hear we're working together, so we will give that, we'll work on it with our attorney and do the timeframe. That's something that the board will engage him to do, and give us a time that we will have, everything is gonna be done on the schedule, believe me. So they have no problems with that, and he will, uh, adhere to the board, and the board will be reviewing it, and we'll have our time scale and our timeframe to get those things done. Okay?
I will take that.
So we'll, we can put a date up, it's according to how fast we can do, and illegal, and Mike, he just told you, the buy-ins from the other people too, as well. So that's what we will do, believe me. The board will do their job, we'll do due diligence, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Uh, motion to adjourn.
So, who?
Thank you, God bless you all, and I forgive everybody, so God can move us on, okay? Anything and everything you said, I will give you.
Thank you.